Planning zoning commission for the city of Granbury will now come to order at 6:00 PM on Monday, June the 10th, 2024, Granbury City Hall, City Council chambers. The first item for business is public comments on agenda items that are non-public hearing agenda items. Do we have anybody we'd like to speak? If not, we'll move on to our first public hearing tonight. That's public hearing C1, consider the request of Chris King for SUP to allow for auto repair, major use, and heavy commercial zoning. The property is located at 4646 East Highway 377. Cody?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This property is located, like you said, at 4646 East Highway 377, and it is plotted at .98 acres of the lot one, block one of the Tony and Pam Denton addition, and the SUP is for automotive repair major. It's currently zoned heavy commercial, and for auto repair heavy is required to have SUP in heavy commercial, auto repair major. This is the proposed site plan. There's going to be an addition that's lined out around the rear of the current building or the existing building. And these are the considerations for a SUP permit. And these are the zoning ordinance considerations for regulations. The property is zoned heavy commercial and located on the frontage of US Highway 377 with commercial businesses surrounding the property, and the proposed use appears to be appropriate for the general area. And the site is already developed, and the new building addition and use will occupy the existing property. Conditions may be recommended and imposed. On May 30th, city staff mailed out eight public notices to all the property owners within 200 feet on the municipal tax roll, within 200 feet of the subject property. Notice was also placed in the Hood County newspaper on May 25th, and as of this time we have zero letters in favor or against. Staff recommends approval for this SUP, and the voting options for tonight, recommend approval of the SUP as presented, recommend approval of the SUP with conditions, or recommend denial of the SUP.
Thank you. Cody is the applicant here, and if so, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Chris King.
If you'll come to the microphone and turn it on, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Chris King. I'm one of the owners of the proposed property, or the current property. And so I just wanted to thank you guys for the consideration, and then specifically Cody, Jennifer, Kara, for all the help in getting us to this point. We are, the additions that we're going to do in addition to the current building will also improve the look of the property. We're going to modernize the outside of it. It's a 20-year-old building that we've purchased, so we're going to reskin, do everything. That's some of the details, but we're going to basically bring up the looks of the property, not just expand for our specific uses and needs, but it's going to be a very nice-looking building that will present itself very well with everybody coming right in front of us down 377. So just want to thank you for your consideration, and is there any questions I can answer for you guys?
Any questions for the applicant?
Good evening. Wasn't this a repair shop before?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Pam and Tony, it was TND Automotive and Transmission.
Right.
And so we got to know Pam through actually doing business with them, Pam and Tony both. And so they did, they did what I guess is considered more light repair. I mean, they did oil changes, transmission repair, engine replacements, which is a lot of what we were going to do. We're not going to be doing like oil changes. That's not our thing. Yes, we will change oil in the older cars, but we're basically upgrading older cars, modernizing them with modern drive trains, say ABS brake systems, things like that, taking some much newer technology and putting it into the older platforms. Because we actually, our base company is, we build race cars, and so at the racetrack up in Crescent. And so we're taking a lot of that technology and forward-thinking engineering and such, and going to be putting that into the older vehicles.
So rest of mods?
Rest of mods, yes, but to another level is what we'd like to say, but yes, that's the point.
Are you going to have any dead vehicles stored on the lot?
No, sir. That's the interesting part. That's Cody and I were just visiting about that, is that in our industry, we can't leave cars parked outside because either old, the cars that we're going to be working on, either say they don't have windows, or they're antique cars. They don't need to be left out in the weather.
Right.
Same situation we have up at the racetrack with race cars, because we have to, everything has to come in every night, and that's one of the big challenges we will have, is having to push cars out, work on what we can during the daytime, and then push everything back in at night. And so that's part of the consideration for this expansion, is so we can operate within the building. And no, we don't have any, we won't be doing dead cars or making a salvage yard out back. That's not what we do.
Okay. And there'll still be plenty of parking for daytime use?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Are we have any speakers that signed up, Kelly? No? Okay. Any questions for staff, commission members? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the SUP request, please.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda tonight is C2, a public hearing to consider the requests of Ken Dixon to replat lots 45 and 46 of the Catalina Bay 2, Phase 1, .857 acres located at 1600 Chesapeake Bay Court. Cody?
Typically, y'all won't be seeing any of our plating, but since this is a replat of a residential, that is the one that we still have to take forward to y'all in council for approval. So things like this are more rare, but y'all see them on occasion. This property is located at 1600 Chesapeake Bay Court, and when combined, it's going to be .857 acres. It's currently plotted as lot 45 and 46 of Catalina Bay 2, Phase 1, and the purpose is to combine the two lots for one residential lot and making an accessory addition around the pool, I believe. And it's currently zoned PD Plan Development with a base zoning of single-family residential, 12,000 square foot lots. This is what the replat is going to look like. And staff recommends approval of the replat. Voting options for tonight, approve the replat or deny the replat?
Thank you. Cody is the applicant here, and if so, would you like to speak? No? Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Any questions for staff, mission members? No audience comments? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for the replat request, please.
Chair, I move to approve the replat.
You have a motion to approve the replat. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
With a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One, two, three, four. Okay. I didn't need to vote tonight. Sorry. One page. The next item on the agenda, Cody, can we skip ahead to the monthly plat approval and get that out of the way? Skip to D2?
Yes.
It should be fairly short. Can we go to that?
We do not have any plat approvals as of today.
Okay. All right. Then that puts us back to D1. Items for discussion, 2023 Comprehensive Plan Update Progress Report and Presentation of Draft, Chapter 2, Vision and Goals.
There we go. Good evening, P&amp;Z. We're glad to be back before you tonight. I'm David Jones with Fries &amp; Nichols. We're assisting Cody and Kira with drafting the update to the comprehensive plan. With me also is Connor Roberts and Wendy Beno. Connor's going to pass out some supplemental materials to you, including a copy of the presentation tonight and a summary of the input that we've received to date since we last came to you a couple of months ago in April. We've had a public open house, which some of you attended, as well as a public survey. So we got a lot of feedback from that. We had 200-plus responses to the survey. Many of those questions were open-ended questions, so we've got a lot of written responses. We're not going to go through each of those individually tonight. We do have a summary that's been provided to you. We'll go through some of the survey responses, including a look at who took the survey, kind of where they live in relation to the city, and some of what they said, some of the feedback that they gave us, as well as some of P&amp;Z's feedback. Thank you for those who did the homework assignment on the goals. That helped us out a lot with assessing the goals from the current plan. That was one of the questions also that we asked at the open house, so we got some good feedback on that. One of the things that we want to kind of work towards as we go through this presentation tonight, as we look through all of this input, we're going to go through it fairly quickly, but it's going to build towards some key themes that came out of that feedback, and then some guiding principles that use those themes to present where we want to go with the comprehensive plan update. So we're going to look at that. We're going to kind of build up to that. And then one of the things we want to do tonight, once we're done with the presentation, which is really kind of a report to you, before we get on with drafting the land use chapter and the transportation chapter, which we'll come back to you with in a couple of months, we want to sit down, do a mapping exercise that's really interactive, that kind of gets some ideas on paper as far as land use priorities for the city, as far as transportation priorities for the city. So we've got some maps that you probably noticed as you walked in, some markers on the table. Once we get to the end of the presentation, we're going to ask y'all to step down from the dais, come to the table, and we've got some AV equipments that will keep things on record. And then myself, Connor, and Wendy will kind of hopefully facilitate some good discussion around that, mark up those maps, and then we'll take those, scan those, and that will go into building our land use maps and transportation maps that we'll come back to you with hopefully in a couple of months. So as far as an update, we are about 25%, 30% of the way through the projects. We've kind of gotten through our initiation and assessment phase. We're getting into the input phase, and tonight kind of concludes the public input initial part. We will go back to the public a little bit later on in the project, once we have some content drafted, and then finalize and adoption. We're still looking at doing that early next year. So here's where we're at on the project timeline. Want to go through this fairly quickly. There is quite a bit of detailed feedback and get to the key takeaways, and then get to the guiding principles. We do want to get your feedback on the guiding principles. There's six of them, so what we kind of hope to do is get some feedback on that tonight. Do you agree with the guiding principles? Are those something that we can build on? Because we really want to use those to filter our goals for each chapter that we construct going forward. So summary of community input to date, we had our workshop with y'all back in April, and then we followed that up with a public open house. Approximately 25 people attended the open house. There were boards set up around the room that people could mark on, put stickers on. We also had paper surveys that they could take, as well as a computer setup for them to do the online survey. The online survey was a big success. It was open between April 18th and May 28th, so a little over a month. We got 205 responses, which is largely thanks to the work of Kira and Cody and Chuck and the city's communications team did a really great job of publicizing that survey. 205 responses for a community of this size is a really good turnout and really good representation on that part of the feedback. We asked you to review the 2016 plan goals. We also asked that of the open house attendees. The feedback that we got is that most of the goals listed in the 2016 plan are still relevant. That's something that we need to carry forward to the update of the plan. Some of them that could be removed or possibly modified had to do with alternative energy sources, had to do with some of the ways that we handle design and quality of neighborhoods. Housing sizes and housing types and diversity came up a lot, not only in relation to the goals, but also the general feedback that we received during our April outreach activities. And then make sure that Granbury stays distinctive, that it stays unique. Those are kind of some themes that we heard over and over again. Our strengths, downtown, historic square, the lake, those are running themes that came up as far as the city's strengths. No surprise there. Some of the challenges, of course, have to do with access, with traffic, parking, housing affordability or housing availability for young families, for professionals. Some of the diversity of employment was something that came up as a challenge, improving walkability, particularly near the downtown square, getting from areas that are adjacent to downtown but are difficult to get to on foot. Opportunities, those were largely centered around the 377 corridor, the lake, and out near the airport, where we still do have a lot of undeveloped land. So keep that in mind as we go into our mapping exercises. We're going to want to talk about, you know, what do we do with that land around the airport? More destinations, both for young families and for people in general to come and enjoy the lake, experience a lakefront, experience downtown, maybe use some more diverse attractions, and then having better connectivity and linkages between downtown and the lake was also seen as an opportunity. We asked about the vision for the future of Granbury. This was a question we asked both of P&amp;Z and of the general public, and some of those same themes came up, you know, maintain the small-town charm that gives Granbury its identity, that gives it its character, its safe neighborhoods, maintaining that waterfront presence and activity centered around the lake, keep it authentic and unique, and keep it business-friendly. These next few slides are going to have some bubble graphs, and the key here is that the larger the bubble, the more responses we got with these concepts. So again, what do you want to be known for in 2045? Similar feedback as to what we received from P&amp;Z was found in the general public. What are the biggest priorities for the future? No surprise, those were centered around both transportation and attracting visitors, making sure that Granbury stays unique and the destination that it is today. Those are kind of the two key themes of biggest priorities. Again, traffic congestion stood out as a big issue, pedestrian circulation, also housing choice, jobs and employment. That was kind of a secondary issue, but one that was consistent throughout the feedback that we received. A lot of folks who live in Granbury have to commute elsewhere to go to work, to find jobs, which makes commuting a challenge. And then what do you want to be known for in 2045? So this is, again, looking ahead, you know, 20 years into the future, what do you hope that Granbury will not only preserve but continue to be known for? And again, that came back to the downtown and the history. The paper survey feedback that we received, similar feedback in terms of the assets with the people, small-town charm, lake, downtown, similar priorities. They asked for more businesses in downtown. There's a recommendation of an incentive for retail businesses to stay open longer so that, you know, they're not closed on certain days of the week, their hours of operation are maybe a little bit more convenient, which also speaks to the levels of activity around downtown and the vibrancy of having a downtown where more businesses are open, you know, maybe into the nighttime hours or on the weekends, and maintaining that vibrancy all year round. Develop a comprehensive parking plan. Parking was identified in a couple of places as a challenge, particularly when festivals or events are happening around town. Both places to park and the ability of people to get from remote parking areas to downtown was identified as something that the plan should consider addressing, even if it's at a high level. And, you know, with a plan like this, being kind of a general policy guide, a general document, we're not necessarily going to design solutions for every problem, but what we want to do is, where it's appropriate, put in a recommendation that the city look at and explore those issues. And maybe one of the things that the city does down the road is engage someone to design a solution or to come up with something that, you know, can be bid or can be funded. That's absolutely something that has a place in this plan that we want to explore as we get into the recommendations, goals, implementation part of the plan. Wanted to point out that there were several folks who listed different places that could serve as an inspiration for Granbury. One of my favorite responses that we got is that no place serves as an inspiration for Granbury. Granbury serves as an inspiration for other places, which I thought was telling. I thought it was appropriate that, you know, if you live here, you probably have folks coming up to you and saying, well, how does my town become more like Granbury? You know, which is a great thing to have. But in terms of other places to look at, a couple of hill country towns, New Braunfels and Fredericksburg, Panama City Beach, Florida, downtown Grapevine, which has had a lot of success in maintaining its character and having some good events. Your feedback summaries may contain a little bit more information about different places that were suggested, but those are some of the ones that stood out. As far as the folks who took the survey, about 70% of them either lived or worked in Granbury. 22.8% didn't live in the city limits but did live in the ETJ, which again is a two-mile buffer around the city limits. And then a little under 5% identified themselves as others, so we don't have any data on where exactly those folks lived. The majority of people, or at least the largest number of respondents, had lived in Granbury five years or less, 30%. 25% though had lived here for over 20 years. So half of residents either just got here relatively speaking, or they've lived here for a long time. The age of respondents, we did not have any respondents under 25 years old, so that 25 to 44 constituted about 20%. And then that proportion kind of grew as you get into the 45 to 65, and then over 65. So a little bit older representation in terms of the folks who responded to the feedback. The online feedback was, again, the same questions were asked. What do you want to be known for in 2045? This was a little bit more balanced response. There wasn't one that kind of stood out, head and shoulders above the other one. In general, people wanted to, again, maintain the historic nature of the town. They wanted to maintain its identity as a waterfront community. Inviting streetscapes was one that stood out a little bit more with the online feedback. What makes Granbury unique, however, no surprise there, downtown and parks, I'm sorry, downtown and the lake, although parks and neighborhoods both got votes, along with schools. So in terms of listing priorities, and these are in no particular order of importance, although traffic and presentation might be the top two, we did not list these in terms of order of importance. Friendliness and cleanliness, parking, restaurants, shopping, so again, maintaining that retail base and that vibrancy. Small business, making sure that as Granbury grows and becomes more popular and attracts more outside investment, that that does not push out small businesses who have either located here and invested here, or might be looking at Granbury as a place where they want to put down roots and start a business, that we maintain opportunities for that. Maintaining tourism, nightlife and entertainment. Again, getting back to kind of keeping things vibrant even after working hours into the evening and into weekends. Walkability and accessibility, improving the pedestrian experience. Again, we saw that on a previous slide. Balancing growth. So that kind of gets into the nature of, you know, you have your downtown area and your lakefront, but you're also seeing a lot of growth kind of on the outskirts of the city, and how to balance that in terms of housing, in terms of traffic. So that's definitely one thing we'll want to talk about and think about as we're doing our mapping exercise. So those all kind of coalesced into five key themes, and you have this on the front page of your handout. So it's all the things that we covered in the feedback, so this is really intended to be kind of a summary of all the feedback that we received, which is, again, is pages and pages if you look at the kind of open-ended comments on the survey. But maintaining historic downtown and culture as a source of pride and identity, enhancing and diversifying Granbury's transportation network to not only move auto traffic efficiently, but also other forms of transportation such as walking and biking. There were a couple of comments along the lines of some sort of transit system, whether that's on-demand, that just kind of serves the downtown area, or parts around the lake, or something that's a bit more regional, that utilizes the existing rail line in part that goes to Fort Worth. We did have a couple of comments along those lines, that that would be helpful for commuters. But just looking at things through a little bit more diverse lens as the city upgrades its transportation network. Granbury should actively seek new economic development opportunities, leveraging the undeveloped property around the loop, around the north part of the city. Emphasize strategic and thoughtful growth relating to housing and commercial development, so that gets back to that balanced growth of not putting too many eggs in one basket in terms of one housing type, or retail businesses, you know, which may tend to be a little bit more fickle than, say, industrial or commercial businesses, having a good diverse economic base that doesn't exclude any one thing. Granbury should focus on balancing its small-town feel with providing regional entertainment opportunities. So this is kind of the dilemma of every town that wants to grow, that wants to maintain its charm, and the things that attract people to it in the first place. How much do you grow without sacrificing those qualities? And at what point do you start to leave the small-town identity behind and become too much of a big city or too popular? That's kind of the balance that we're trying to identify, is, you know, how much more development do you have, particularly around the lakefront, before it becomes too much of a good thing? So keeping that balance in mind, obviously one of our important key themes. So we took those five key themes, and what we tried to do is put that in the framework of, all right, what principles do we want to use to guide each of the recommendations of the plan? So as the draft chapters come along over the next few months, starting with land use, transportation, housing, we want each of those chapters to have goals or actions that the city wants to put in place over a five, 10, 20-year timeline, which may mean, you know, capital investments, that may mean programs, that may mean partnering with other governments or other institutions. It may mean changes to your code or your incentive structure to foster economic development. Each of those goals shouldn't just exist in a vacuum. It should be guided by principles that kind of shape how the city looks at itself, shapes what the city is trying to achieve. We don't have a vision statement that we're proposing through this. The current plan doesn't have a vision statement either, but we are introducing these six guiding principles, which do summarize some of the input that we received, but it also, you know, summarizes kind of things that Granbury has identified about itself, or that have been observed about Granbury as being identifiers that you would want to build upon, that you would want to maintain as we try to achieve each of the goals of the plan. So this would be kind of the Q&amp;A part of the presentation, or the feedback portion of the presentation before we go into the mapping exercise. We do want to see if you have any feedback on these guiding principles. You know, if we don't hear everything, you know, tonight, this will be part of the next draft that we give you, but we want to identify these at this point in the process so that when we start formulating those goals, we kind of have a heading that we can look at those goals through. So keep Granbury historic and attractive to visitors and residents. Better connect the historic downtown to the waterfront. Let the waterfront function as a center of gravity and activity. Vastly approve the transportation network in and around the city. Diversify demographically and economically. And focus quality growth and identified strategic locations. So the corollary to that is that, you know, you have your growth areas that you've identified. The other areas are intended for preservation, that that's kind of the priority versus, you know, let's develop all of this area, let's preserve some or all of this area. So again, these are high-level guiding principles. You know, they're not intended to be specific to any one property, or even specific to any one area of the city. They're kind of citywide principles that are meant to be a little bit aspirational and direct us as we look at those goals and actions of each chapter of the plan. So this is the part where I'm going to pause and see if you have any feedback, any impression on these guiding principles, if you would suggest any changes or any different principles. There doesn't have to be six, but that makes a pretty good balance where we're not getting too, you know, too... not getting too, you know, too broad, but we're, we're focused a, a little bit, but, but also, we also cover everything that, that we want to cover. So I'd love to hear any, any feedback on these. This wouldn't be your only chance to, to provide feedback, but we do want to identify these at this point. I'm going to get a drink of water while y'all look at those.
I'm assuming these guiding principles are not in any particular order here as well.
Not in any particular order, no. They're, they're not even intended to be topical, you know, necessarily where, you know, oh, this one's about transportation, this one's about housing, this one's about business. It's really about how Granbury sees itself, how it identifies itself. And in 20 years down the road, you know, we would want these guiding principles to still be probably largely the same as, as they are today, despite all the changes that we will probably see in 20 years.
I think you pretty much nailed what we talked about last time.
Great.
A lot of this is going to be dictated for us in the next 20 years. So I guess the next way would be to guide us toward, you know, these, these goals, and I'm sure that's the next phase or two there.
Yes.
It appears that we're all good.
No pressure. If you wake up tomorrow morning and you say these are horrible, then you're not going to hurt my feelings. We want to get it right.
So I'm having a question.
Okay.
About better connect the historic downtown to the waterfront.
Hmm.
What do you think people are having in mind there? I mean, at this point in time, we have a certain amount of limited access from downtown to the actual waterfront. We've got city beach, we've got a, a park with a boat landing. We don't have a marina or necessarily. We have two waterfront restaurants that are relatively close. So what do you think people are asking for more here?
Yeah, because that one seems kind of Pacific, pretty, pretty targeted by some, not somebody in particular, but the rest of them, I'm kind of like you, we're kind of connected on this side. Are we trying to connect to 144, you know, where the lake is? I mean, that, that's the only one that I thought was a little bit targeted more than the other five.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, I don't know if that's the right word.
It, it seems to have a lot of prominence as being one of six.
Yeah.
When it's not, unless we did major excavations and brought, you know, toward the park, you know, we opened up that area for significant boating. I don't see how we can, or, or get rid of a bunch of, you know, VRBOs and so on on the lake, but.
I do think that's what we had discussed, though, was trying to get some manner in which we could get more boating into the downtown area.
Right.
That would also ease some traffic and parking issues, but also provide boaters the opportunity to utilize the downtown via the, the.
Like slips?
Yeah.
The day, day slips?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, more, more public access.
Yeah, and I think, I think we specifically talked about that whole beach area, and I don't know.
At, at the convention center.
But there seems to me that there would be a, a great opportunity for some boat slips in that beach area, outside the, the swimming area there.
And they'd talked about day docks at the convention center as well at one point.
I think that's what we discussed.
That's kind of a good idea to try and get, because a lot of locals to come that might be on the lake, too, because we have so many people, it always surprises me, that live here, who never come to downtown, have no idea what's downtown. So having slips that brought them by boat and then by foot on up to the square, that's a pretty good idea.
Well, I know from my, from, excuse me, from my experience, the family that I have that comes from out of town, friends that we have that come from out of town, for example, they really, really like to get in the boat and go to Stumpy's. You know, it's just easy to drive, but they like to go to, get in the boat and go to Stumpy's. And from, you know, my experience and friends with Naples and so on, there's some, something very appealing to the idea of being in a boat and coming up, you know, close to where the action is, so to speak. But I'm just trying to imagine as to how we would do that without that major excavation to get.
Well, I, this isn't connected to downtown, but I think the Overstreet Landing project, isn't it supposed to have some slips, I don't know?
Yes.
Something like that, but I don't know if that's public or private, that's going to connect to shopping and restaurants and the hotels and stuff, I thought, in that area. Here, I mean, I could speak to that. It's been a long time since we've seen the Overstreet property.
It'll, it'll have some, but not many.
Right.
It's been a while since we looked at that project, but there is a, a public park component. The, the, the docks are still under consideration, and, and whether they be public, private, I, I'm not certain at this point, but the, the current plan has the, the dock slips there.
As I recall, though, the retail on that project was more in the center, wasn't it? And then it was residential around, or am I not remembering correctly?
Right. So, so that's a mixed-use project with apartments, town homes, and single-family for residential as well as assisted living, and then restaurants, hotel, and shopping.
Would that shopping have canal access? I know they were planning on doing some canals.
The plan, as I recall, did not include shops on any of the water bodies.
Restaurants that were accessed by water or somewhere?
Correct. Restaurants on, on the waterfront, and then park on the waterfront.
Seems like that was all commercial on the first floor, and the second, third floor were like apartments and, and stuff.
Apartments or else.
Quite a bit of commercial there, I think.
Correct.
Well, that, that's great feedback, and, you know, I think that, that's a point well taken about, you know, this, this one is maybe a little bit more specific than the others. We wanted to capture, though, the idea of taking your two greatest assets, as, as identified fairly overwhelmingly in the public feedback, and incorporating that as, as a way to leverage both of them together, so that they're not separate entities. There's a comment about some folks never go to downtown. You know, they love the lake, but they don't, they don't go to downtown. How do we tie those, those two things together? And, you know, there's a lot of different ways that I think you could accomplish that. You know, one, one might just be the, the physical linkage, you know, between the two. Maybe one is providing more, more access along the waterfront. There was some interesting discussion during the open house about utilizing the lake more from a, an actual transportation standpoint, purely transportation standpoint, so that folks aren't, you know, having to make that trek around the edge of the lake, you know, where there's no bridge, and driving into downtown using the lake itself, you know, whether that's water taxis or, or their own personal boat, you know, to, to traverse from one side to the other to get to downtown, and, and maybe extending downtown closer to the lake as, as an area, you know, a district of activity. Again, that, that is kind of getting into the, into the details of how we implement this. This is intended to be more high-level, but as a, as a specific part of the guiding principles, I think what we would want to look at preserving is how do we tie those two things together so that they can exponentially benefit the city? And one is not focused on the exclusion of the other, or folks think, I, I enjoy this one, but I don't know anything about this one, that they're actually tied together as one experience. We can, you know, work, work on that one a little bit, think about how we might be able to, to reword that. Again, it doesn't have to be six. If, if you think the other five kind of adequately capture, or hopefully better than adequately capture, what we want the plan to follow in terms of principles, that one can easily be incorporated into a recommendation in one of the chapters. Or we can, we can come back and, and try to reword that one a, a little bit differently. Do the other five, do they all look pretty good to you, though? Any, any comments about those? All right. Kira, any, anything else that, that we didn't cover?
Nothing.
The only thing I might recommend is, is the parking situation downtown. We've got so many events now, it's, it's getting pretty tough now to do the parking, and I've always kind of wanted to park in garage block two off the city square. And, and at that one point, it was discussed, but it never come about. I think where the old hospital was, maybe? Does that sound right?
I wonder what the Country Love Theater was a long time ago.
Yeah. Right. The Historic Granbury Merchants Association proposed a parking deck behind the Opera House. Right. To city council in, in January this year. Right.
That, that may be a, a direction we can, we can work on and, and come back as a guiding principle, you know? Maybe this, this one becomes more of a recommendation, and then as a guiding principle, since you, you mentioned a parking deck, and the discussions that have been had with that, maybe it's, it's more from an economic development standpoint, or partnering with, you know, other entities, institutions, agencies in the city. Maybe from a partnership standpoint, you know, work towards economic development goals or, or growing things economically. That, that might be an alternative.
Yeah, I'm personally not in favor of a parking deck, at least not in that location.
Yeah, it wouldn't be about a parking deck, just about.
Lots around the square to cut down on traffic through the square.
Well, that's, that's one we can, we can take a look at and come up with a different So we're going to get into our, our mapping exercise component, and again, this is intended to be really interactive, you know, sitting around a table, kind of open dialogue, open discussion. We are going to have one person from each table that will be identified as kind of the captain of the table, who's going to give a, give a summary of what was discussed. So we're hoping to get, you know, 20, 25, maybe 30 minutes of discussion. But just to kind of set the stage from a future land use standpoint and a transportation standpoint, we do have a few more slides here that kind of cover the, the feedback that we received on land use and transportation. Some of the, the major ones that were identified is what is missing in Granbury. This is non-residential. Recreational uses, you know, open space, trails, parks, could be public, could be private, open space, restaurants and retail. Also, number three there is technical employment, manufacturing-type jobs, which most people have to leave the city right now to, to go to. Medical, office, corporate, hotels and resorts were, were one that, that came up in some of the open-ended responses as well, particularly around the lake, but possibly in other parts of the city. What type of retail restaurant services does Granbury need more of? So the two major ones there are nicer restaurants, sit-down, full-service dining, particularly outside of downtown. Outdoor recreation, that one doesn't need too much explanation. And then entertainment, and that could be any number of things that are either natural or based around the lake, parks, but also movie theaters, other types of event centers. Healthy grocery options, some other large national retailers. Food trucks was one that, that came up, as well as small boutique retail. So those are some ideas from the, from a non-residential standpoint to be thinking about, you know, where some of those might be able to be located. Think big, you know, big ideas. Think about how things could, could add to the character of, of certain areas, supply what those areas need right now. Housing, you know, what types of housing does Granbury need more of? Again, this is from the survey. Small lot, single-family residential, so still detached residential, but maybe on smaller lots, you know, maybe 50 feet wide, 40 feet wide, but also large lot, single-family residential, areas where that would still be appropriate and still be needed. Town homes and patio homes, similar to small lot, single-family residential, that kind of medium range in between single-family and the larger apartment complexes that we've all become very familiar with. What types of housing do we need in that middle range, and where would be some appropriate places for that to go? I'm not going to read through all of these. They are on your, your handout, but just some questions to ask as we're doing, as we're looking at land use, you know? What are the appropriate land uses for the undeveloped areas? So the maps that you have are largely blank, because we want to kind of start with a, a blank canvas. You all know the, the city, you know what's where. What we want to do is fill in those blank spaces. We can pull up the zoning map if we need to. These don't have zoning on them, they don't have future land use on them, so we, we do want to kind of look at it as, as a blank canvas. If we're starting, you know, from scratch, what's the most appropriate land uses for, for each of these undeveloped areas? Commercial, residential, industrial, manufacturing? Let's play with each of those and, and see what's, what's most appropriate. We do have a bigger version of this map that we'll bring in here and set it up on a board. These, this is kind of summarizing the transportation needs and issues. So we've got a number of things on this map. We've got development agreement parcels shown in pink. We've got areas where a lot of development is happening or about to happen. We've also got crashes shown on this map, where we had a lot of problems with accidents, including fatal accidents. So from a transportation standpoint, that goes hand-in-hand with land use. When we put land use somewhere, it's going to have effects on our transportation system. So how do we mitigate those effects? How do we make sure that we're not putting too many intense land uses in one place without having another connection? So think in terms particularly about 377, opportunities that we have to not only not overload 377, but maybe create some parallel routes for traffic to, to go through. Again, we have to navigate the city limits here. That means getting into the ETJ and working with the county, but to the extent that, that we can, we want to try to look at the transportation network and ideally what sort of connections would, would we want to see? And then as those opportunities come up and we need to work with other, other agencies like the county or TxDOT, you know, we have at least identified what's the best transportation solution for the network. Some feedback on, on transportation. Again, this is not too much of a surprise. We need a well-connected vehicle street network, well-connected sidewalk network. We want to make some provisions from bike and pedestrians so that they're not mixing too much with, with traffic. So that might mean shared use paths, that might mean more natural routes along streams or, or creeks for them to, to go, where they're not mixing in with traffic. Complete streets are along that, that same line, where all users of the right-of-way kind of get equal consideration, whether that's cars or pedestrians or, or bikes. And then some similar questions to ask during the, during the transportation exercise. You know, what are the areas that, that really need some, some help in terms of congestion? I think probably everybody has one or two or three or 18 areas in their mind that, you know, we really need to improve transportation in this area. We, you know, want to identify those during our mapping exercise so that we can, we can put that on the map. So we'll bring those boards in with the transportation issues. We already have our maps and our markers set up around the table. So at this point, if, unless there's any questions, before we get into the mapping exercise, we'll invite y'all to step down from the dais, and we have six, so three can go to this table and three can go to this table, and then we'll, we'll join you here and, and we'll, we'll start marking up some maps.
Why are we starting from scratch? Just going back to a previous topic?
Well, we, we can still, we can still bring that up.
Well, that's awesome.
One table we've already got is there. What we want to start from is just not being biased words, you know, in the plan that we have, but, you know, looking at it through, through a fresh lens. And also not making them half too cluttered, is a good consideration.
All right. All right.
Richard.
Richard.
That is a hall, our, our.
I got it.
Yeah, I saw it.
377.
All right, men, how we doing?
You're the nominator, team.
Yes.
Are you just going to summarize?
Yeah.
The team captain will summarize your findings to the other team.
Right. They wanted to go residential all the way. So, to me, this would be a natural for residential right here across the street. Keep all this commercial here.
On that side.
Already developing residential right here. Right. And they're planning on going larger, so this is absolutely residential. And again, they.
The streets and stuff are there, they're putting all kinds of dust on my RV every day.
Of course, that new golf course is right here. Yeah, that's the new golf course. And as usual, they did one commercial in front, and we gave it to them.
Okay, so that's all.
Way up to the loop, which is kind of a mistake.
And this is just a private, this guy is not a private thing, this is a very private one.
It is a private property, for now.
And this is residential.
Here, right. So.
They cut that out, that's going to be.
Okay, here's the peninsula. Right here. So, yeah, I've been back in here. This is all private property. But it's right property.
My RVs are affordable, and so every time I go in or out of there, fortunately, there is a passageway in the middle that gives you the ability to jump in.
Because this is owned. Well, lakefront property, the best use is going to be residential. If we can get $1 for your property.
So, and we'll get to transportation, but I think what we'll do is we'll.
Let me go back a little bit, so we're pretty much saying that everything kind of within this zone, down to 377, kind of all this node would be more for manufacturing.
So, I think what I'm hearing a little bit, we have a couple, you know, it depends on how you classify.
Now, the high schools here, the suburbs here.
We have some large, we have some undeveloped property.
This area is manufacturing. This area is airport businesses.
So, I think that's, let's talk about that.
And this is commercial over here.
You know, we have a lot of undeveloped properties.
I just want to kind of roll off and make this out. This is real airport support, airport commercial.
Yeah, it's got some challenges too, but what do you guys think are appropriate for those kind of conditions?
Hangars, and that air service companies. With the updated runways, we should have all kinds of stuff coming in there in the next four, five years.
And then, kind of all this area for manufacturing in.
There's the whole school.
Yeah, I mean, like, not the school, but right around here.
Is that the one that's up?
This area.
That's by the airport, okay.
Oh, this middle school's here. High school's here.
Okay.
Where's the airport?
Like you're just saying in general.
Yeah, in general. I mean, I know, we'll have to look at the specific. But then, generally, this area residential now, I guess my question would be, ideally, we all realize it's private property.
So, that's the industrial park.
For all of this. Do they come up to the new way?
There is a business going in.
It's big, I remember both of those.
Very, very slow industrial. So, this is residential.
Didn't we approve another big subdivision over here? Or was it?
Right. Yes, one little thing.
Have they started that yet?
No. That's commercial along the front, residential behind. Fifteen or 20 commercial lots here along 377. I'm sorry, the loop.
Retail lots.
Yes. Retail commercials.
And then, I realize this is all private, but I mean, just, you all weighed your own, this would obviously be residential.
This is obviously residential.
Getting tendency, you build it in.
And then, you've got the police department here.
So, is that something to our?
Just the front half, the back half.
We think that is still a private land use over here, you know, it's not.
It's going to rise. It's the airport.
Good, that's you think.
That's been approved by the council advisor.
That's all public.
And this is that apartment that laid dormant for two years.
What about?
But it is open and full, I think.
Exactly. And so, before we want to.
The head of it wanted to put residential here, but he couldn't get a driveway on.
Do we see that as an area of housing?
It's public road to private road. Neighborhood serving. Never going to happen unless he buys the next door property.
Commercial uses, what do we think? You know, will we have some pockets?
I think I heard something about that, and one of them's been somewhere. So, that's the reason that residential development happened over there.
Right, yes.
It was more about, you know, so is it still in the area?
Right.
Is residential inappropriate use? If they work out for the development process?
But any other, you know.
Yes. This is a cultural property right here. That is a prime piece of property.
There's still a lot of development, there's a lot of open spots along 377, so there's still plenty of room for retail businesses or commercial businesses, et cetera. But obviously, I think the development, this side of the lake is still.
This piece right here, it's next door to.
If this takes a lot, supposedly, the airport is supposed to bring more in.
We're talking about this over here.
Well, then logically, you'd see more residential development, and then you'd see more business development in this area.
Yeah. Couch is over here. Unless those apartments.
The holdback right now is getting across the line.
Right. Yeah, and that's where that building burns.
Yes. Really, anything, this side is more complicated.
Did you know that the last transportation plan now had a plan to go across? That's a pretty long drive.
I thought that was pretty interesting.
Public vote slips.
All right, so let's just a little bit into current land use.
And then, I also heard a proposal for the convention center. Right. Yeah, but they moved the votes to the other side, because B.R.A. wouldn't let them put it behind the convention center. Yeah. And then, there are the projects that went up in cost, and then on the money.
Anything?
So, you're talking on this side?
They're meant for public votes, it's right about.
From its current use to a different use or any.
Okay, yeah, I know what that is.
We should be identifying.
And is that a good spot?
That's a great idea.
You know, obviously, conversation gets more sensitive when it's residential.
It's close to downtown. And there's already a decent sidewalk right along here.
Right.
So, it's walkable to.
So, what I'm kind of starting, we're talking about kind of that downtown lakefront, how do we better connect that? Yeah, how do we better create opportunities to really do both?
How can this, basically, we're getting at is how can we get the plans to steer our existing condition in a way that we think it's.
But those are kind of key properties that the city needs to be looking at.
But it is workable. 377 being largely commercial.
That's a pretty far walk down.
But imagine, if you had to, then if you could imagine, let's just vision, if you predicted that it will, and you need to reuse, redevelop some of these spaces, are there appropriate places for other types of uses?
How about a tiki hut?
Capital residential. Captain Kirk's tiki hut? Is that where we can see that type of development to keep it away from the waterfront?
I mean, this is a long ways off. We did a really corporate one coming from the.
There's a lot of vacant land still here on the waterfront highway.
Sure, I'm completely with you. When you said.
Separate from the road, it was really an amenity to me.
This is at the Texas House of Pickleball, right about here.
Oh, do you really?
But again, this is pretty, pretty.
Texas House of Pickleball?
Backside, I'm very proud of that.
As well as pickleball nets.
On the front side over here.
It's tricky, isn't it?
Yeah, I see it every day. A lot of empty property still on the waterfront highway.
You know, so one of the reasons we did this.
Okay, so, if we were to sort of circle, if we were to sort of circle this as a core board, we could see.
You actually start thinking.
Now, right here is that.
Could that be something that.
Right here is that lakeside. Is that the name of it? Lakeside Landing. Landing, and that's where the small hotel and all the commercial and residential.
So, this would be.
All of it.
Yeah, I know this is already developed, this is all mixed.
Right. And everything else in that corner now is built.
What do you think's the reason for that congestion? It's not these businesses, is it? These businesses, what do you think?
Well, that should be on your presentation anyway. It may be, but I'll just double check that.
All right, here, right.
Well, it starts, I say it starts.
It starts right at the bridge.
And then, it goes all the way to Acton Highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to go with blue in a minute, but let's just call things to go.
And I think it's.
There's still a good amount of.
Well, that's farther up.
This is the old. That's where you got this parallel.
But I don't know.
That's the old act.
Knox Ranch, where the discount tire.
We often will get off here and go back around to get there.
377.
And it's actually.
Nobody wants to go from here today. I mean, I get on my car today, and I'm backed up.
I'll go downtown.
So, if you are coming from here, you want to do something.
Go through the square, and then get across that. One week because of that people bar, and it's so bad.
Right now, until it's a ride or something. I don't see a lot of people.
Most of your retail is here along 377. And on this side does not nearly as much.
Basically, some street 377 shouldn't be kept right here, and then you go up.
I don't know, I mean, retail here would be a really good idea.
But the point is, is that the intense businesses are in the Walmart, Home Depot, now Pets Center, Pets Mart, et cetera. Down all through here, other than the old Kroger.
Tractor Supply's going about Kroger.
All of that is all small stuff.
Really?
Arbor shops.
I got to talk to them about that. I was out there the other day.
That would be very tragic to do that. But I'm kind of sad, though, when they redo the highway, we're going to lose that.
Well, like, right in here, isn't this a hospital right here? Yeah, hospital right here. Okay. There's a piece of land right here that's been for sale for a while, and I had a friend of mine looking to put a big apartment there, but he's still vacant. He never did anything with it. And I think that you know the piece of land I'm talking about, it's been for sale forever.
But there is a front.
But we've still got to get through this. Coming in 26, and that's going to be major.
But are we going to lose that? If I remember right, when they presented the new highway plan, I thought it was going to go away. And that was my concern, is now you're going to have a lot more direct access to 377 for all of those little businesses.
So, that was some of the things I remember talking about, some of the public, like, I know, I'm going to get to transportation, we're talking about trying to figure out the loop, and that's the thing. There's some, I know that there's some interesting things over here, and you do need to think about land, just because it's a transportation.
They're going to take some off that side.
Bottom neck that comes up this road, and, you know.
So, I think it brings up a good point, you know, we've talked a little bit about expansion, and there's some probably techniques to attack, whether it's access management, or that kind of come up in different forms.
A long one, 44, I'd like to see commercial retail.
Changing or developing properties, those are always improvements.
Well, we've got quite a bit of residential going out there right now.
Getting things up to compliance and things like that.
Two subdivisions, one up from Stone, has been working on this forever.
I got a couple things.
That's Spanish Trail.
Let's talk a little bit about housing.
The one where they suddenly discovered the six-inch gas line.
You know, we've heard probably there's a lot, you know.
Is that what it was?
Besides, even the housing.
And then, we've got another division.
Of interest, so, you know, we're talking about.
Now, the county's doing a transportation.
Right.
Are there areas that we do have to move as appropriate areas for that to happen? Is it, is it a gentle introduction to existing areas, or is it, is it a new product in a new area?
And this is my brother out here.
This is the end of our.
And then, where?
It almost sounded like, yeah, it almost sounded like it must have to be come out wider, because some of this has been built now.
Yeah.
That it would almost come down this way.
That would almost make more sense.
So, I mean, I know that that's a dream.
That's not going to alter that much here, because these people when you're here are mostly going this way.
Yeah, right.
They're not actually trying to go west. That's going to be, yes, it's, I would not call that.
To me, residential.
Other dreams to find out, my other dream, my other dream would be one like this.
Right.
You know, will somehow play with.
That's not going to leave the press. Something I talked about at the workshop. Most people say there's two bridges across the lake, there's really three. And I hate to say this, this is my secret. I live up here in Abe's Landing. One, two, three. I can come through the backroads here and come down Meander.
I think the bottleneck right there is that stoplight.
That's not good for high traffic, because.
And the loop coming in.
It's a narrow, two-lane road.
That is much more useful.
But that would be a better loop. But again, it's in the county, it's not even on the county.
They're going to bottleneck at the intersection of.
Okay. But that's, this, I remember, I have it, so I'm not going to get too detailed with this, but I remember.
Yeah. Rita, did they, at one point years ago, if you might remember this, didn't they talk about extending this loop straight across right here somewhere?
Yeah, that's part of our.
Yes. And they just got tabled, I guess. Well, the county's talking about another bridge down here somewhere.
We don't want to put an opportunity, things like that, to source some.
Not my lifetime.
Let's just for that, for the sake of.
Okay, so that one.
Yeah.
That's a long range. So, you mentioned retail, I mean, I agree, more retail on the road, but then residential in the background, you all agree with that?
500 feet in from the road. Yeah, more to take care of these people over here. All they've got is broochers over here right now. So, they're turning right here, like Rita says, and going up here to HEB and Kroger.
So, interesting.
So, they need to rent a gas station.
Oh, yeah, that's right, they're gone in there, so never mind.
Yeah.
Do you know why?
And I think that's a story that's good to flip for tonight, because what we're talking about.
This little piece of road here, country creek, need badly to be repaired.
Have badly developed residential property.
But there's no city resident business on that road, it's all that goes into the county. And she said, county, let's split the cost on the county, so absolutely not.
So, is this all privately owned here?
So, the city disannexes the road and this piece of water.
So, this is the loop, this is what you're talking about here.
I teach that, plain ice county.
So, this is all opportunity, this is all opportunity up here.
All right, I want to come over this way from the, just a big picture of the.
Okay.
What, one?
I want to think back to some of the residential.
And then, right along.
Yellow is your city.
And right along this line would be.
That's correct.
Almost all the recreation is on this side of the lake. The ballfields, the soccer fields, the hiking trail, the biking, it's all on this side of the lake, because almost nothing over here.
Sort of that.
There's a small public park going in in Saratoga.
Has that opportunity to detract.
But it's really nowhere near big enough to have ballfields and soccer field.
And that's here? Is that where that park is going? Saratoga, south of the other side of 167.
This is 167, right here.
Okay, so it's, yeah, it's going.
That's Meander. Now, I also talk about maybe we could cut through over to 167, because I come down Meander, it's.
Okay, well, we talked a little bit about residential. I actually dipped a little bit into the commercial.
I'd go further north, I'd take like through there.
Sort of responsibly locating and associating together.
When I lived, I lived.
Well, that's, that's good enough spacing for two collector roads.
And I've been through about a foot of water there.
Special areas.
So, are there other areas then on the south side of parks?
It's going to help us with narrative, and if we need to focus on any specific area, or if there's a physical trade that we like, so that area.
Maybe by James Road, where the Y is.
The lake, and it's, we kind of have one forming here, right? It's this.
Maybe that's a good place for some.
Agglomeration of undeveloped property, that's a rarity.
The wires off of James Road.
That's kind of the last thing.
Is this James, is this James?
That's James. Yes, it is.
The Y is right there.
Okay, so this could be a bigger.
And there's some, that's counting them.
That's the Y, that's why it's.
Yeah, that's not going to be the park.
Yeah.
Lakeside.
Part of the lake.
Yeah.
It's Lakeside Landing.
Landing, and that's where the small hotel and all the commercial and residential.
So this would be.
Public park.
Yeah, I know this is already.
This is.
This is all mixed.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is major.
And everything else in that area is built.
Well, what do you think's the reason for that congestion?
That'll.
It's not these businesses, is it? These businesses, do you think?
Well, that should be on your presentation anyway.
It may be, but I'll just double that.
All right, here, right.
Well, it starts, I say it starts.
It starts right at the bridge.
Or in the light here.
Right.
It goes all the way to Acton Highway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna have to go with blue in a minute, but let's just call things used to go on.
And I think it's.
Still a good amount of.
Yeah, you might have.
Farther, well, that's farther up.
This is the old, that's where you got this parallel.
There's a gap, but I don't know anything.
That's the old, not the discount tire.
Yes.
You know the problem?
We often will get off here and go back around to get there.
Three seventy seven.
And it's actually just.
Nobody wants to go from here today. I mean, I get on my way today and I'm backed up.
I'll go downtown.
Yes.
Back up.
Go through the square and then get across out back. One week because of that people bar and it's so bad.
Right now, until it gets rid or something. I don't see a lot of people.
Come up on the.
Most of your retail is here on three seventy seven. And on this side does not nearly as much.
You shouldn't be catching it right here and then you go off.
I don't know how, I mean, retail here would be a really good idea.
But, 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 but the point is, is that the, the intense businesses are in the Walmart, Home Depot, now Pets, or Petsmart, et cetera. Down all through here, other than the, the old Kroger.
I've heard where it's going.
All of that is all small stuff.
Really?
Arbor shops.
I gotta talk to them about that, I was out there the other day.
So do you think they're shipping?
That would be very tragic to do that, but I'm, I'm kinda sad though when they redo the highway, we're gonna lose that.
Yes. Well, like right in here, isn't this a hospital right here?
Yeah, hospital right here.
Okay. There's a piece of land right here that's been for sale for a while, and I had a friend of mine looking to put a big apartment there, but he's still vacant. He never did anything with it. And I think that you know the piece of land I'm talking about, it's been for sale forever.
But it, but, but there is a.
Well, we've still gotta get through this.
That's right.
They'll come in twenty six, and that's gonna be major.
But are we gonna lose that? If I, if I remember right, when they presented the new highway plan.
Fifteen years if they do it.
I thought it was gonna go away.
Yeah.
And that was my concern, is now you're gonna have a lot more direct access to three seventy seven for all of those little businesses.
So that was some of the things I remember talking about, some of the public media, like, I, I know, I'm gonna get again, transportation we're talking about, trying to figure out the loop and that. There's some, I know that there's some interesting things over here. Do you need to think about land just because it's a transportation.
They're gonna take some off that side.
Bottom neck that comes up this road and, you know.
Yeah.
So I think it brings up a good point, you know, we've talked a little bit about expansion, and there's some probably some techniques we can attack, whether it's access management, or that kind of come up in different forms.
A long one, forty four, I'd like to see commercial retail.
Changing or developing properties, those are always improvements.
Well, we've got quite a bit of residential going out there right now.
Getting things up to compliance and things like that.
Two subdivisions that, one up from Stunkey's has been, they've been working on this forever.
I got a couple things.
That's Spanish Trail.
Let's talk a little bit about housing.
The one where they suddenly discovered the six inch gas line.
You know, so we've heard probably there's a lot, you know, we heard.
Is that what it was?
Besides, but housing.
And then we've got another development.
Of interest, so, you know, we're talking about.
Now, the county's doing a, a transportation.
Right.
And you're talking about. Are there areas that we do out there that is appropriate areas for that to happen? Is it, is it a gentle introduction to existing areas, or is it, is it a new product in a new area?
And this is my brother out here.
This is the end of our.
And then where?
It almost sounded like, yeah, it almost sounded like it must have to come out wider because some of this has been built now.
Yeah.
That it would almost come down this way.
That would almost make more sense.
So, I mean, I know that that's a dream.
That's not gonna alter that much here because these people when you're here are mostly employed this way.
Yeah, Rob.
They're not actually trying to go west. That's gonna be, yes, it's, I would, I would not call that an.
To me, residential.
Other dreams to find out, other dreams, my other dream would be one like this.
Right.
You know, will somehow play with.
That's not gonna leave.
We're talking about.
Something I talked about at, at the workshop. Most people say there's two bridges across the lake, there's really three. And I hate to say this, this is my secret. I live up here in Abe's Landing. One, two, three.
They're gonna bottle that.
I can come through the back roads here and come down Meander.
Right. I think the bottleneck right there is that stoplight.
That's not good for high traffic because it.
And the loop coming in.
It's a narrow.
And that is much more useful.
But that would be a better loop. But it's, again, it's in the county, it's not even on the county.
They're gonna bottleneck at the intersection of.
Okay. But that's, this, I, I remember, I ha- I have it, I'm, I'm, so I'm not gonna get too detailed with this, but I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rita, did they, at one point years ago, if you might remember this, didn't they talk about extending this loop straight across right?
Yeah, that's part of our.
Yes, and they always got tabled, I guess.
Well, the county's talking about another bridge down here somewhere.
They're not gonna. Things like that to source.
Not my lifetime.
Let's just for that, for the sake of.
Okay, so that one.
Yeah. That corner here.
A long range. Other, other, so you mentioned retail, I mean, I agree, more retail on the road, but then residential in the background, you all agree with that?
Five hundred feet in from the road.
Yeah, more to take care of these people over here, all they've got is broochers over here right now. So they're, they're turning right here like Rita says and going up here to HEB and Kroger. This is, this is.
Somebody need to run up to a gas station.
Oh, yeah, that's right, they're, they're gone in there, so never mind.
Yeah.
Do you know why?
And I think that's a story, that's a good input for tonight, is what we're talking about.
This, this little piece of road here, Country Creek, need badly to be repaired, but there's no city resident business on that road, it's all that goes into the county.
As he said, county lets split the cost on, the county said absolutely not.
So is this all, is this all privately owned here?
So the city disannexes the, the road and this piece of.
So this is the loop, this is what you're talking about here.
I teach that, plain ice county.
So this is all opportunity, this is all opportunity up here.
All right, I wanna come over this way from the, just a big picture of the.
What, one.
I wanna get back to some of the residential.
And then right along.
Yellow is your.
And right along this line would be.
We get to.
That's correct.
Almost all recreation is on this side of the lake. The ball fields, the soccer fields, the, the hiking trail, the biking, it's all on this side of the lake, cause almost nothing over here. There's a small public park going in in Saratoga.
Has that opportunity to detract.
But it's really nowhere near big enough to have ball fields and soccer field.
That's here? Is that where that park is going?
Saratoga's on the other side of one sixty seven.
This is one sixty seven right here?
It's one sixty seven, yeah.
Okay, so it's, yeah, it's going.
That's, that's Meander. Now, I also talk about maybe we could cut through over to, to one sixty seven, cause I'm coming down Meander, it's.
Okay, well, we talked a little bit about residential, I, I actually dipped a little bit into the commercial, if I like to.
I'd go further north, I'd take like through here.
Sort of responsibly locating and associating together.
When I lived today.
Right.
Well, that's, that's good enough spacing for two collector roads.
And I've been through about a foot of water there.
Special areas.
So are there other areas then on the south side of parks? I mean, I know we got some small ones here, but should this be bigger, or do we need ball fields?
Or if there's a physical trade that we like, so that area.
Maybe by James Road, where the Y is and.
We've kinda had one forming here, right? It's this.
Maybe that's a good place for some.
Agglomeration of undeveloped property, that's a rarity.
The wires off of James Road.
That's kinda the last thing.
Is this James, is this James?
That's James. Yes, it is.
The, the Y is right there.
Okay, so this could be a bigger.
And there's some, that's county.
That's the Y, that's why it's.
Yeah, that's not gonna be the.
It could be.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I remember right. That's actually county, county land there.
Of course, we're talking.
I believe.
Behind the, the Y.
Yes, or around the Y.
It's kind of an over.
But it could be a place where a lot of land.
Could be.
The superstore that when the bond fell, it's, it's a high school now.
County.
School district, is this James?
This is James.
Right, right, and it's, it's.
Got a new high school there.
Worth noting, and of course, that'll come up in our narrative of the plan, and how we kinda proceed forward with it.
Was it that far over, or was it over in this area?
It was right along James Road.
Yeah, okay.
Except here.
Right, okay.
So they've still got that property?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they still have it.
Was that recent, was that this year?
It's.
The bond, last year?
Three years.
I should.
Two years.
And they're.
Been three.
I went to shock at those holdouts are probably wrapped up in that, if I re-gas them, they'll pull another.
But if that goes, I'm assuming that would be fine for residential.
I do, are there any other just big picture, they need space that we need to.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll talk a little bit about.
Like, okay, so we've got jobs.
Is that outside the city?
And we're filming in all residential.
And all this is.
Is that where he's building that?
This is, this is our new emergency, uh, building. All this is gonna be car dealerships, bagel shop, and a car dealership.
Doug told me.
Yes, and then, we just approved those six hundred and fifty lots here around Garrett's.
So that it wouldn't, it'd have a pretty view.
So that's on this side. It's the same, same thing on this side, you don't have the grid?
Home's up on the other side.
But he was doing on this side?
No.
It was the one that surrounded.
Are these the existing car dealerships?
So Doug Stewart, who developed the whole.
No, one, that's the car dealership, Doug.
He told me it was.
Kia and Nissan are.
Ten numbers.
And Chevy dealers down here.
Well, I can't imagine, he's kinda wanna spend his life managing it all for you, you're gonna have to pay somebody.
That's right, cause this, this is four here.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is all residential?
They're more spread out.
Most of it, I don't know how far back.
The dock horse is actually on.
But generally residential. Okay, and what about?
Oh, really? In the country?
It's pretty sparse, but there.
No, that's not that big, that's a big development that's already been appeared over here.
That lease is.
I thought it was on this side of the road.
Yeah, I did, too.
It's over there by the Lake Grand Berry Medical Center, that are those doctor's offices, it's over here.
Oh, it's surrounded Karen's nursery. No? And backed up to Sarasota.
It's, it's, it was next door to that Lake Grand Berry Medical.
No, I heard that, I heard that the other dock horse is coming back. Have you heard that?
It's up to there, it's on.
I heard, I heard.
What's the name of it?
I can't remember.
Eddie Kira.
Who knows?
Kara?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're messed up here on this one, too.
What's this development that's.
Uh, Lake Grand Berry Medical Center, whole lot that's been in annex and part of it wasn't, but even.
I thought it was.
That's what we, that was the original thing, and I think that, so I just heard my sister-in-law lives over here, but we heard that.
It's a big development over there.
Coming back.
So that's down here?
Yeah.
And that's this, and then this, this development agreement on that?
Well, what's next more to the, the doctor's offices?
The horse ranch.
The new medical center right here?
No, not that.
It's back down here, I don't.
Surpland.
Yeah, it is. But we can go right, let's go ahead.
That's a beautiful piece of property, but that's all, that's all properly owned.
If you don't, if you don't put something on like a, on a plan, it'll never add up. So, you know, this, we'll just call this, uh, uh, just a residential.
There are other jobs to be.
Okay, well, I think there's just nothing over there.
So, there was a mention of large lots.
Yes.
Okay, where would you put large lots in the city? I mean, I could see that.
No, I wouldn't say large lots.
Well, I think that's a little bit. Yeah, that's a little bit.
Remember, we had two streets.
And it used to be half acre, now, now you could say sixty five feet wide, that's a large lot.
Yes, yeah, you could, depending on the asset.
It's all, this is all planned for different types of residential.
Because smaller lots, that would be a thousand percent.
This one is the one that actually was.
Right there, cause we had two streets, so we're out in the city and they, they put them in the city.
And they have a development agreement.
You know, your consideration of items, so, I think, really, it's the, it's the.
People tend to, like Bentwater's large lots, people tend to sort of wanna be out, you know, out away when they have a lot.
Yeah, and I, I would say that's, if that makes sense.
Stay the same in the future, or are there any?
Not necessarily the city.
Get smacked on that one or anything.
This is Saratoga here.
Yeah, that's all, that's all focused.
But it's all.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah. Cause they love it, right there, and it's this right here, that's.
Well.
Yeah, but this is Paul Green.
If anybody.
Okay, we, there was some development.
Wants to buy, wants to redevelop.
Remember with party, you'd be.
It's supposed to connect to this stuff, but I was just looking at this. But it's already residential.
So the same residential.
Well, it's, it's not in the city either.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
It's not even in the city.
So for, for a, for a conceptual, you know, further out typically would be more appropriate that was perceived, a larger property. Yeah, kinda what, is that what you guys are showing us here?
Well, I know the issue with.
Man in the city.
Only city limits at next to three seventy seven.
It didn't have, it was a mud, water, sewer.
Because the city limits go up except for he's too old, inside the city limits, there are, I think, fourteen islands of county land.
So I don't know if this is too far out for residential or not.
Yeah.
Okay, where is that highway four again?
The old highway four has an area for the.
There's a, there's a spot right here, is this four?
There is a mud that's just.
Right here. Right here, so old boy's hatch.
It does.
That, uh.
Something that's a mud.
Oh, that old boy that passed away from that, I'd love to see that development.
Femright, yeah, John Femright.
So, so we're talking larger lots, consideration.
What is the objective saying, what you want to do with something that's already private?
Yep.
I don't understand the exercise, we need to take it from him.
Right.
So whether, why, why would we care, I mean, why? I don't understand.
He was in the country, we want that place.
Yeah, yeah.
They wanna sell it.
Okay, well, any other way in use, central thing?
What do we, I really want this for? City, like, uh, public use.
You can say it, but you want to have something.
Okay, well, then all this, all this would be, all this would be.
But that's kinda, that's kinda it, that's what we hear all the time.
What you're saying is this private property.
There are other strategies too, it's not just so much where you.
Why are we even having the discussion?
How much are, how much are we getting, what's this developing?
The only reason we have a discussion is if it changes. Or we making sure that it's the best, you know, it's a good piece of property to be utilized.
Does it further the objectives, like, and things, and all that.
Park lane isn't.
So sharing, what I'm hearing is, we saw lands up on the lake, we want that to be residential.
It would be.
Maybe.
I've always said that'd be good for me.
There are certain businesses would be good on the lake.
Perfect.
You have to, is this a good place for restaurant? No. Cause there's no access. Would this be a good place for restaurant? Absolutely.
From there to there.
From Florida, how many?
That may be true.
Great place for hotel.
But, you know, I was looking at the, have you guys redone the, uh, the population data and so on, and updated all of that?
Part of the build is part, past the nineties, it gets beat back.
They're gonna sell, whoever gives them.
Right, right.
Cause when I was reading the previous plan, uh, it looked to me like the, the population of youth was shrinking. Obviously, mostly earlier.
Yeah, we have, we have some interactive snapshots at the beginning, and then as far as our projections go, we kinda take it a lot. Land use area, vacant areas, one of those densities, won't be tackling that.
I've been here nineteen years, and there's been such a dramatic change that, uh, even in the last, since the last plan.
Yeah.
From the housing types.
But not a huge influx of.
Seeing people who ever responded.
Yeah, and I, I, from what I see.
Yes.
And then, of course, we're dealing now with. We were talking about this. Our birth rate is, you know, falling.
Yeah.
National.
Correct, not any real nice.
Punished.
Yeah. My son just came back from five years in Japan, and their birth rate was like this.
Yes.
Negative. In fact, marriage is becoming zero.
Kinda like, just not the states, but it's.
And now it's all D R Horton.
Yeah. And Abe's Landing, where they're building out, most of the lots are, are a fifth of an acre.
Oh, wow.
So, so you're saying.
Very inaccurate.
And do you think that people that go in out just didn't know all the new stuff coming along?
The wrong people showed up.
They don't know, I'm telling you, and we have everything that's small lots right now.
But she's exactly right. We've got people that want nicer houses, and the demand is there, but there's, there's, am I right? There's, there's, the supply is not there.
The only thing you got is down that south bend, that's what it's called, south bend.
Yes, yes.
And, and those are more like, I'm not sure what size they are, but they're not most of them.
Oh, no.
But they're also very expensive, you probably are hearing the.
Oh, if, you know, that one in, I was in yesterday, probably hit five.
So when you're starting here, it's that we may, it makes sense to be larger lots, you do have that, you have small.
People may not.
Yeah, you have very little, long, big.
The challenge with large lots and city limit is what the city makes them do.
Yeah, but I, I say close around here, myself.
Urban gutter, sidewalks, sidewalks.
Like three seventy seven.
Right. And it would be nice to be able to go farther.
And that increases the cost of the lots.
Stop.
And so the builders.
Development.
I mean, in Abe's Landing, again, the new houses are four hundred to six hundred, would you say any reason?
Except for like when you go into like other ones, like Little Ridge, and, and streets that have like five times, and you've got five, you know, four to five hundred of them, house one up.
You mean past four?
The culverts in the, in the.
Yeah, if you come behind.
They don't look like they match the houses, it looks like a crummy way to come in, and then you got these green, not houses, so.
Yeah.
It looks like you're going to nine houses.
You pass four trailers to get to the.
Yeah.
That would be good, but.
Cause it, this is all developing here, they're correct.
It's like going to, it's like going to Lucas property out there, off of Mambruna, you pass four trailers before you get to the.
And if you look at Abe's Landing, from the original flat to the current flat, they kept shrinking the lot sizes.
Oh, they were, they were small from the beginning.
Like front, but, yeah.
Like front.
We're much bigger.
Correct.
And you go to the original phases, lots of, one of them in pretty decent size.
Like front, fifty foot, three hundred foot.
Yeah, so we talked a little bit about some, some pain points, right? We've got a couple here that we've already called out.
Years is one fifty five.
What other areas of concern are there that immediately jump off? Yeah, could you do?
Between one and that, that's fifty five owner, and it has.
Traffic wise? Yeah, traffic wise, and then let's talk a little bit about, I wanna talk a little bit about alternatives to, you know.
Well, right, after he died, it tied everything up for two years.
Yeah, but it's still.
I know, it is.
But let's talk.
It is. I've got two friends over there, it's right next to the wastewater treatment plant off of.
We know that there are stretches, right next, just in the natural conditions.
Over here. Okay, here's Waters Edge, that's where.
Here's the wastewater treatment, it's right here.
It's those two long streets going.
Right here. No, it's.[1357.12] Right here. Right. No, it's.
Right. No, that's supposed to.
It's this property right here. Right here.
It's this. It's that. It's this right here.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I think this, you know, there's some strategies that we should put out there.
Thank you. I didn't pick that color today.
You know, better accommodate that.
You got it.
Way it exists.
Yeah.
Just keep it sorry.
Anyway, I'm just saying that that was not, no, it was, it's a.
It's probably not even twenty percent.
It has not ever at all.
I think it was on the list before.
I think that was one of those city county.
If you could get rid of the fifty-five.
Yeah.
I agree.
I've got something there for you.
Well, and again. But what about the Dolce Vita?
And those are pretty nice little houses. They are.
Huge.
I have no idea what they stand on that. That was, I would think that's gonna have a bank.
It's gotta go bankrupt.
What's that?
Dolce Vita here on the waterfront.
This right here is really bad.
Oh, well, they've been having.
This is more, this is more westward congestion.
Yeah.
It's just rental apartments.
Based on the parking lot, they gotta go bankrupt soon.
There's some vision right here.
Well, they hadn't even.
We can't figure out why they come here, but we don't have any.
I've tried selling houses there.
Really? Well, we'll go old stuff, you know, that.
Turn left to go right.
We don't have, we kind of have those on the way.
When you get out of there, you gotta turn and go.
We're gonna, we're gonna have one of those forty-eight old Granberries.
Four-story buildings.
It'd be kind of.
Those are townhomes.
Yeah. When they were here, they, they weren't, they had decided they were gonna sell them. Is that the name of it?
Could you square that up?
It's where they used to shoot the fireworks.
Like that.
So does this not work because it's age restricted?
You're not focusing everything right here.
It is age restricted.
It's age restricted. I don't know. It's a pretty pricey.
Do we just have that?
Yeah.
They're small and pricey. Yeah. They're little. I always turn here to go here, cause my sister-in-law lives over here, but.
Well, that's how.
Maybe you close this.
We sit there waiting.
Yeah.
You close it off and force a light right there too.
It took them, what, five weeks to build it?
Yeah, I don't think a lot of it's still finished. Where the intersection is less.
Yeah.
Well, it's a, you know, it's a little bit more typical.
Well, I'm just saying.
Let's go.
What are those things that.
But the more lights you put in here, it just makes this worse.
Yeah.
Cause you've got this all merging in from town and coming in.
I don't know that you can by law.
How can you?
You can try to, and if you could, you shouldn't, you have to ride by law though, to do the high, cause they're, you just through your land.
Timing issue.
Can I give you, keep them out?
Right. Whatever may be.
Yes.
So those are all things.
Well, Dolce Vita was the plan development, so the city council actually said no, but they said yes.
This is gonna be challenging to get across, you can get it, to get across this way, you know, to cross, if you're coming this way, to cross over. It's easier to get out than it is to go over.
And it ended up not.
Well, it just depends on the time.
Orders to build big lots, they tell us if the city's firemen have their costs up, that they can't market them.
So it stops traffic.
So you can go off.
Yeah, cause there's, there's a.
Well, I'm trying to city limits.
Yeah.
And they can put in a crappy half road, open ditches.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, the bottom line is, you have more houses, you build only, only.
Even here.
Land, the more money.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that just makes sense.
That's really gonna be the private going out and buying.
But we have a real problem with, with really nice houses here. And we have a lot of mediocre houses.
And remember what we did with the impact use for water and sewer?
Right.
That went.
Is there anywhere we should specify?
Old Granbury Road.
I mean, to get for future.
Where, where is that?
I want to see.
I've always said.
Do you have the flexibility to say at least?
So standing that like that?
The development comes up and you always, that's a fantastic.
So you close this?
The poll.
Yeah. And they're doing that why?
You do want to be able to.
Because they're putting this.
Yeah. No, I, I would say that the waterfront areas, we, we should encourage larger lots. It's not gonna happen. Cause the builders wanna cram those waterfront houses in one on top of another.
Yes. That's exactly right.
He lived in a waterfront lot in A-Planning where, I mean, you could stand between the houses with your arms out, stretch and touch them both.
I sold the house because it was, the lot was fifty-four wide. My next door neighbor would get drunk and leave Willie Nelson up real high on that. I couldn't sleep on my master. He wasn't, he wasn't driving everywhere, was he? I'm not gonna mention it.
Yeah, that, that.
Yeah, let's talk same place I've asked for.
That would do what you're doing there, just do it.
Yeah. Then you're not jig dogging here.
So that you can get to the light.
Yeah.
I mean, you see on the, on the thinking map, there'll all be that.
Just behind, behind Dairy Queen. It needs to go up to the lot so somebody can get in here.
Yes.
Get off the three seventy-seven and come on this direction.
Amen.
Get all these pieces.
Expect a serious injury.
Okay, so where's that exactly? I know it's hard to tell.
Dairy Queen comes through here, wears through here, then it goes into a shopping center.
Well, it can go around. It can goes around by Stoneberry.
There's always a rear.
And then the Dairy Queen's.
And it stops.
This is, this is the Walmart.
Yeah, we need connection.
Here it is right here. Yeah, this is it.
See, it is right here and it's checked.
The corner where Curb or HEB is, is just a.
Here and get over here and.
You can sit there and, and see one every day.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So that people, all these subdivisions over here can bail off if there's something going on over here, which many times is this, this market.
Of course, what we do is, anybody knows you take Hill Street across here and.
This one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we all do.
I think people have gotten used to that intersection a little bit better.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have that.
Still gets a chair.
That line in the left hand is weird.
In front of that, of the new apartment and all the, and it stops right there.
God, we've never been in that way.
And it'll, you'll wait, you'll sit through the lane for a second. Wait, don't turn red.
Let me just flip to this one. We talk transportation.
I just think there's so much distraction, you know, with HEB and with Curb or so on.
So.
I mean, I'm an expert at running into the back of the people, so.
Running into this one.
I'm a totally, I'm totally ADD and so I'm always looking over this, but you know.
I think it's an important thing to make, cause whether maybe recommendations or.
And then we're gonna have all these.
Something, some strategy that we can work on to introduce in these areas.
Gold walls.
Get wall off of you.
I've actually tried to get a break installed on the dash over on my wife's side.
Yeah.
You can make it to Hill, but you still.
Uh, okay, well, let's talk a little bit about, you know, I've got a couple.
There's no way I'm gonna be able to repeat this, so if you're gonna.
No, don't worry about it. So let's talk a little bit about, you know, the road transportation.
Okay, so what are other, what are some of those other little fixes that make it look?
What?
That's a big.
That's a big fix. I don't know why they give it that.
This is area concentration.
Because it diverts traffic back out here on three seventy-seven, which for complications.
Yeah.
And again, Over Street, which is a dead end between.
Downtown.
What's the name of that?
Cross.
Well, the only trail, the only trail that we have is really kind of limited.
You wanna extend Crawford Court.
From Shamy Park.
Yeah, your, your best opportunities are generally gonna be in the. Right. Your right away is already connected to somebody somewhere, so typically those are your best.
Same thing as Waters Edge on this.
Yeah, but they have cars on that side.
Unless they shut the railroad down and then we can use it.
Hey, you never know.
What are the little, the, again, liquid.
Yeah, I don't think that railroad's gonna shut down.
Yeah. Makes sense.
I always said, if I could just get to work on the school.
Yeah, but as it relates to, you know, like I said.
I could just get over here.
Would you, would you like a bridge here?
I would like to go charge there.
Or a fair water fair.
We need a little back and forth water station.
Because we're limited. We, we all, we turn out here in the same area. We come out here, we either have to turn left or turn right.
I get.
Walk our way up through.
Are there any other?
Through when they put, at every intersection, I mean, all the way through this. At every intersection, where there's a Y, they wouldn't.
Where's Shirley Hook's?
Yep, like a receiving ramp and.
This, the meander up to Reed is kind of the connection you were talking about.
It's where.
It'd be better to take the Temple Hall Highway, cause Temple Hall is already a highway.
Yeah, cause obviously in front of them, you know.
It'd be better to somehow connect.
Breathe in here to here.
Yeah.
That makes more.
Cause you can guess a lot of curves down through meander.
That way open up a lot of development.
Yeah, most of the time they do that, cause that's just. Right.
Yeah, I would go.
But it's better than, than not good if we did want to make those connections.
Then, has that name for. Okay, anything else?
It's under the soil.
Young kids riding their little scooters. Yeah. Put their battery towers and they're cruising down the highway.
Yeah.
Or their electric bikes, I've seen those around here, that just.
The little thing on Pirate Drive is handy when I was out.
It's a safety concern. Is that really, is that three, it's mostly three seventy-seven. You see that? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It connects over there to, to the light, Pirate Drive.
Yes.
Is this, is this?
You know, sometimes.
Oh, that's one forty-four.
Pirate Drive to.
Yeah, that's a good.
Sometimes if the county misses. Push hard enough. Usually.
Stand Pirate Drive down.
Just kind of. On how serious.
Here's a complexity.
Yeah. No, I, I, yeah.
High School.
High School is right here.
Yeah, it'd be right there.
So Pirate, this is Pirate here.
There's a lot.
There's a lot there and it's right across, it's not, that road's not in here.
No, this is, this is Pirate, that weird curve.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's a complexity. There's one.
Right. So they only, they always.
They wanna extend Pirates down.
And, and we get that. I think for us, it's more so.
Yeah, to want these streets down here.
As a legitimate.
By, um, by auto rail.
Cause of the transportation, you know.
Would it go right by the school then?
Is it possible?
Yeah.
No, that's not automated.
You know, those kind of connections, sidewalk connections.
So you're saying connected from here down to one forty-four.
Generally good, you know, that's, that's kind of the best way to manage traffic.
Yeah, it's number.
Some of these real specific issues.
Sometimes you can build yourself out of.
Major fatalities and stuff. I have no idea. I never figured out why the fatalities are each year.
So, you know, we, we talked a little bit about that.
What is it? Is it all marked? I mean, is there anything that you see that is real problem areas that?
The airbag Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Yeah, so whether it's, you know, doesn't need to buy.
And the bridge, of course.
Every, every intersection.
Plan three seventy-seven.
Sometimes it's like a. Has risks, cause people aren't paying attention.
To the extent, it would be like a.
But HEB and totally is one.
Like when the company's coming, like a bird.
Two left, turn right. That screws so many people up.
Coming from.
Unless.
Coming from south to north and turn left or, yeah.
But I assume.
Those particular, other than you've got a lot of traffic, William.
When they.
Turn in different ways.
They just got dumped on the streets.
All right. Anything else?
Where you wanna go is. It was really incredible. It's like one more.
We found a guy.
There's a lot of cities.
Quarter.
Oh, for sure. And then they went away. Find them in the bottom of the lake.
Probably, they'd probably hear that would happen. Kids would take them to the lake.
Yeah.
They're worse now. They're better than they used to be.
Let's, let's call it a micro mobility concept.
And that's the one that comes all the way up through here.
Yes.
Yeah, but the worst part of it is from, from the angle.
Now, how would it look?
To Temple Hall Highway.
Yeah.
That is highly traveled.
We didn't really talk a lot about expanding retail in the downtown area.
Okay, so from there to wherever man.
Cause unless you're on.
Standing there. This is.
Morgan Street or Park Street.
Yeah, this is terrible.
It's really resonating.
Right. This is the new wastewater treatment.
It's still.
Right. There's a, a traffic study.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. I think another good thing to talk about.
And then people can dump out here if they had to.
Introduce your commercial stuff. You'd probably want it to fit the, the aesthetic, right? You'd hate to have this kind of random commercial unit locked down in between your downtown areas.
Yeah.
Okay, transportation wise, particularly in these.
But I mean, basically, it's the square.
Right.
You know, and so it's limited by what is on the square.
Areas of development where.
So it, pretty same, there's maybe some interest in.
What's the green?
Expanding the service.
Well, the only, the only question would be is whether you take the.
Potential new development. Um, I'm obviously, we talked a lot about this and the loop kind of covers that.
You know, the area toward the beach, uh.
It's just some general areas of where we know.
I can't remember the name of the house now.
And this one.
Little chapel and there's, but it's all park area now, but.
Davis?
Langton Center.
Is it LA in, in, in G D or?
Across from Stumpy's.
And I don't know whether we'd wanna give that up, but it's, um, cause it's used for.
Green thing?
No.
I mean, Granbury is.
Now, these are just sort of general areas of where we know that there's.
We're looking for the ability to, let's say, expand the square. You know, the square is a square. Well, what if it was a rectangle?
Okay, yeah. This is Spanish triale study.
Or two squares sideways.
That's too competing.
Yeah.
And that's Saratoga.
But Saratoga has a connection called Skylar, which is.
Where the, where the square.
Yeah.
It's.
Kind of this weird like choke point of.
Turbine.
Okay, it goes. Sorry there. Could have called something else, cause I just pulled it up. Okay, we'll, we'll figure out.
That's a, that's a huge.
Okay.
There's a city.
I would lie. I would be like.
Right.
That would be a spot that I think.
Well, we've always talked about that main road going through.
So that's, that's the general.
Right now, they're in and out right there.
General area.
Sun chipping down.
Cause I actually thought about the little park.
Yeah.
Be a neat spot to, we were talking about boat traffic.
Yep.
It has a little waterfront and if you could do.
Because they talked about if there was a fire or something on that one, in and out there, that you stop all the traffic.
If, if this was all completely navigable, now you got a whole.
What's this development?
You can get up in.
Development.
Yeah. And you can get up, you're pretty deep in there. I've actually taken a boat all the way to the city. The water. Really? So you can get?
We're gonna do about five more minutes.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah, we'll start. But I don't think you need to go that, I don't think you need to go that deep, cause that part is like.
I'm just going back to this idea of making the waterfront more accessible to the city, you know.
I was thinking that, if you had that water taxi and where the, where the beach is, and you took it all the way over to, to Stumpy's, you have a water taxi.
And so all two residential.
So this guy right here, Rocket Ness, and just going back and forth doing trips. If you got all residential here, you can take all these residential.
Okay. That's one of those I didn't draw on this.
There was a possible public access point somewhere.
What do we, what do we see this being? I know you said.
It's just dead, it's just dead end.
Yeah, that could be a, be a good landing spot to get to downtown.
Cause Cleaver Street used to be the old.
Everybody's going there.
Before we had a bridge. Yeah. Back in the day, we would cross the river.
He don't give an.
That's why.
Cleaver, Cleaver Street on the side of Cleaver Street.
Oh, that is. Boat, uh, slips. There was the beach here, but they.
Are there any?
It's not a walkway.
A walkway.
Yeah, there's one little dock there you can pull up to, but, uh. Yeah. There's, there's just something about being able to pull up, pull your boat up to.
Yeah.
Those are popular places.
When people come visit us, we do the whole thing there. They very much to eat on the water somewhere.
That's right. That's right. My, my son-in-law, you know, I wanna, I wanna go to Stumpy's. I wanna get the boat. I wanna go to Stumpy's.
We're gonna have a boat instead. Yeah. You know, we've heard talks, I've seen on Facebook about that track lane on the side of.
That's marketing.
Wasn't put something in there with entertainment and waterfront restaurant or something.
It's a great, it's a.
I think they did, remember they did, presented something that was, um.
Is that privately owned now or is that city owned?
Jim was also, Jim, you were elected our table captain.
Well, yeah, I don't know what that means. I, I couldn't repeat this. My life depended on it.
They're doing a walkie on the water. Sounds like Jim, you're, you're flaking out.
I'm flaking out on you. Are you kidding me?
I know there's a serious.
We have to declare a winner.
More, more.
You guys, anybody wanna, you wanna present some of our key findings? So, yeah, we'll just present the other table and.
Looks like we did a lot more work than they did.
That's true. Yeah.
We don't, we don't, I don't know.
I would think maybe we did some, some opportunity areas and then maybe some of your choke points on your transportation stuff. I like, this is a great one too. I would bring this one up. I'll get this, let me get this mounted up.
So what is that?
Well, guys, thank y'all. Oh, is that so?
Trying to connect biking trails and all that? We tried, we talked about trying to take the bike trails over here and connect them to this side of town.
Couple years ago, we did that.
Just drops off.
That was the, the path and rest room plan.
Usually makes pretty decent programs.
And so we thought.
Well, gentlemen, thank you guys. I'll get this mounted for you.
And with the three seventy-seven. And it's been done with that twelve foot, half one, both sides of the three seventy-seven. So that gives.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
You've got a lot of history, you know, and that's, I mean, I.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't talk a lot about sidewalks, but.
Yeah, America's about transportation.
Yeah.
Sidewalks everywhere.
Four years.
My, my whole world for the last ten years has been horrible.
Yeah.
Jim, I'll take that on our tape.
Okay.
Yeah, it's urgent. We're gonna put this on a board and then your designated table captain will explain what y'all talked about.
The whole sign?
The P and Z chairman, chairwoman is on your team, I noticed.
It's true, but the microphone's by Randy. We nominated him. I always have a microphone. I don't want a microphone.
I nominated Richard.
And I am nominated, Richard.
Five minutes or less.
Five minutes or less?
Oh, boy.
Five minutes or less.
I'll just say jump in there, whatever you have to say. Am I going first? No, you're going first. Oh.
All right, this table wants to go first.
Okay, we're gonna go first, we can go home before midnight. We, we looked at the map, we looked at the areas, uh, some areas are fairly obvious, like around the airport, should definitely be, be airport related businesses. Uh, north of the airport, off the end of the runway, we don't want residential there, it'd be nothing but complaints. Uh, there's a possible new, new business coming in that Lance LaCour has been working on, uh, two hundred eighty acres, two hundred jobs, if, if it ends up here, it's still a million things that can go wrong, but if it gets here, it'll be great. Uh, other than that, we, we, on the main thoroughfares, we generally want retail commercial along the frontage, so on one forty four, on three seventy seven, and a lot of the open areas, we, we said residential. We talked a lot about how do we encourage larger lots, and we don't have a good answer to that. As we all know, the city requires concrete streets and sidewalks and curbs and gutters and stormwater management, and all that costs money. And so the developers, uh, say, okay, to make it, make a profit, I gotta have smaller lots, and we see that all the time. Uh, we talked some about transportation as well. Um, we, we really wanna extend Crawford Court down to Water's Edge. Um, Over Street Boulevard, as it gets built as part of Lakeside Landing, we'll, we'll turn around over to Water's Edge as well, giving relief routes from three seventy seven. Um, we, we talked about the, the southwest loop, the county, that's on the county's transportation plan, because it mostly runs through the county, although I'm not holding my breath that that ever gets built, because it's expensive and the county doesn't wanna spend money on anything.
And it probably won't relieve as much.
Yeah. Uh, we, we got into the county and said, okay, is there a way to get from the northern side of town to the east side of town without crossing the lake? And there sorta is now through Reed Road and Meander Road, uh, it's not a real good route, it's narrow two lane roads, but it'd be nice to have a, a hook, a, a, a loop through there over to, not, not, uh, Meander Road, but go all the way over to Fall Creek Highway, which is a. I'm sorry, Temple Hall Highway, thank you. And a better road, and one that the state DOT is improving, so it'd be handle, handle the traffic better. Um, we, we talked some about lakefront, if, if there's vacant property with lakefront, generally we said that that's prime residential property, people want lakefront houses, except for, uh, the ones right by the, uh, Business Three Seventy Seven Bridge. Uh, there's some vacant land there, that would be ideal for restaurant or, or other lakefront business.
Or hotel.
Yeah. Or hotels, is my.
Is that that one lot that just built a, a boat dock yet, is there something about?
No.
And the shores?
No, um, well, there's two you're talking about, one of them is Gary Couch, Tony McNeil, the.
Oh, and that one, that's on Pearl Street, yeah.
Yeah, on both sides, but I guess the inside of the speed grill or the whole.
Yes.
Yeah.
The other side with Gary Couch, too.
And that's, covers the highlights, anything to add, team?
I, I believe some flips, something near the conference center. We think that those other two properties, that the bridge will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were all over the map. We had, I gotta go, I go, is this thing working? Okay. I'll, I'll try to point stuff out, I don't know. Okay, we, like you went to the same thing with the industrial complex, um, over by the airport, and the Durant property as well, trying to, you know, use that for development of, and commercial industrial areas there. Um, talking about, again, waterfront properties, and we like the idea, we're talking about, like you were talking about water access to the downtown area, and with this new complex coming in at the Over Street property, we were talking, man, if we could get something like water taxis, would be really cool, to get some people coming from this shopping center over to downtown, like where the city beach is, or on Cleaver Road. Let them off at the conference center, that kinda stuff, and go back and forth would be really cool, and then it could come all the way over to Stumpies, you know, or, um, the Rocket Ness area on the other side, or, you know, a couple spaces in between that could, could connect one end of the lake to the other and to downtown. So for, um, residents, you know, people that live here as well as tourists that wanna shop in that fancy shopping center when it comes in. Um, other thing we talked about was, oh my goodness, where else? Oh, the chunk of land north of, uh, on the others, between the lake and the loop, where the new police station is, and if that, that would obviously be room for potential waterfront property residential along there, and then probably some residential, you got those apartments that are right there. There's a water something there going?
Behind the police station's gonna be a, a drinking water plant and a wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
But the rest of it is all prime.
It'll be prime going back to the back end, all the way down to Porter Road, or whatever that is.
Good waterfront.
Um, and then, as far as streetwise, we were looking at, we know, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we had something where they're gonna do Davis Road and push Davis Road all the way through to Old Granberry Road, we do something like that?
They nix that.